Okay, good evening everybody and welcome to tonight's full-time council meeting. We'll start with apologies for absence. Does anybody have any declaration of interest above?
Just for the form, to Barnsley taxpayer declaring interest in the first item 7D, sorry, 7D, so second to the pizza, but same as dispensation, to speak and vote on something. Yes, legally required, or budget, setting the pre suit. If applies to any other members of the council, you can get a block. They get a block. Dispensation, if doing it.
Chairman, if it applies to Kenneth, it applies to the law.
Well, that's okay.
Unless he's automatically barred, apart from Manders.
Or if you're not an house owner.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, no.
Cancer taxpayer.
Cancer taxpayer.
Cancer payer, but it's in his name.
No, it's English.
And note there, that's the first item 7D.
7D, yeah.
Because we have two items 7s on the agenda.
Okay, item number three then is open forum, because there's nobody here today. I think there's no questions on the issue yet, but please.
Shall I settle over there, would that be easier?
We'll come back to item three later, to see if there's any comments in the YouTube chat. Item number five, committee working group reports. Sorry, number four. Minutes of the last meeting attached, sorry. Do you have any comments from the last meeting, or we will be happy to pass them over. All in favour of moving, sorry, am I right?
Yeah.
I am extremely tired, I've been busy this week, sorry. Item number five is committee working group reports. We have one here for the general purposes meeting.
Thank you, chairman. I've got an agenda to do with these, which I'm going to in a moment. But if I could just refer to item 2112, which is the events programme. And the bottom of the front page talks about the current financial year. And West Braven together, the company that owns the town centre, were successful in getting funding for four events. The first of which was in December, the second of which is on the 29th of January, and subsequent events on the 12th of February and March. So, we, just to confirm really, that they're going ahead. Much of the donkey work is being done by the town council. And the first one we've had is the evaluation report, which Jo has brought with her, I think. So, this is, as part of the grant application process, we have to demonstrate the benefit to the local economy. And the evaluation report is based on surveys which were completed by circa 200 people, 195 people, and, you know, based on their actual expenditure and what they did and all that sort of stuff. The bottom line is that there was an estimated net increase of some £28,000 spent in local jobs, based on what people said they had spent over and above what the normal spending would have been on that day. And the evaluation also includes some feedback on what local businesses were saying. So, overall, it's very, very positive. The next event, 20th January, is a festival of ice and fire. And we have some ice sculptures, people doing a small fire show, and a dragon, circus skills and all that sort of stuff. The event includes a trail where there'll be six sculptures at remote, local, well, not remote, around the town centre, away from the town square. So, Ottingen Reynold Road, New Townchurch Street, Station Road, Fernley Avenue, as well as the town square itself. But we're gonna need people who just could steward them. So, if anybody's available to do a bit of stewarding on the day, Saturday the 29th, that would be really good, because with them being scattered about, it's sort of ideally one per sculpture, so any volunteers, very, very welcome.
Do you need something for 4 hours, or?
Well, we need to cover eight hours. Five sculptures, which is, you know, sort of 40 hours. So, many hands make a lot of work, and that's not including the stuff on the town square itself.
Fairground, that's what you missed.
Pardon?
Fairground, that's another thing we missed.
Fairground. What, in terms of the activity on the day? Yeah, free children's fairground rides and giving a popular vote in Barnsley Talk, Facebook groups, it'll be one fairground ride and a trampoline, and Manders can have a go on it. Yeah, so that was that one. The other thing, chairman. The other one, chairman, well, there's two actually, just briefly referred to the Platinum Jubilee Fund, where I duly submitted an application and promptly got it rejected, because I read the bit that said that capital schemes didn't count. And unfortunately, ours was mostly capital, so that got knocked back. But the one I wanted to draw attention to, I can't find it now. It's probably under minutes for the last meeting somewhere.
Well?
Well, it was, we'd reported at the previous meeting, I think it was the full council meeting, that we couldn't find the mixing desk.
That's obvious, it's the result plate, in a way.
Oh, right, oh, it's the top of the second page, yes. To note the loss of the sand desk, well, I can report that we did find a sand desk, after buying a fresh one, but really, we do need two when we come to remembrance, don't we? So, it's through the benefit, but that's being funded from the event. So, we're not actually out of pocket with it. So, we can, the addendum is to note that the sand desk has been located and that we don't need to take the old one off the asset register.
There's something else to bring up on GK, on 2124, it says about the town centre planting.
It's on the first page, full cut down.
Bloom Group have said it is today.
Ah, right. Thank you very much. Are you going to hand them out?
Do you know, I don't know, I think I'm just typing or what, I'll go round them.
Okay, so. You'll recall. Chairman, you recall that at the previous meeting, we agreed, well, going back two steps, the town council previously agreed to fund the replanting of the three beds at the back of the town square. And there was a bit of an update and a, you know, sort of, town council reaffirmed to do that. The Bloom Group have been working on a scheme, and what they would like to do is incorporate a new hedge at the back of the centre bed. And there's a sketch showing it, sort of a plan and a perspective as well. The thinking is, it screams that the bottom of the back street, which is quite ugly, and it says here to offer protection from wind down the back street and to discourage footfall over the bed, so, you know, sort of reduce any trampling that might go. As I understand it, it's just for the centre bed and not for the two side beds. But before doing any further work on designing it, the Bloom Group were keen to get some feedback from the town council as to whether the town council is happy for that to be incorporated in it. And I think the, although it isn't that high, I think the downside is the, you know, it will scream that side street at the back of the town square. So if you've got things happening there, you won't be able to see them just as well. So you've got to sort of balance something off against another.
Is there anybody comments on that? Councilor Church?
One minor point, hopefully. With the choice of U, are there any concerns about anything so toxic near the town centre, near the square?
Sorry, say that again.
Something so toxic?
U.
Very, very important.
I don't think so.
U very important.
No. I don't think we have to worry too much about that, do we?
Aye.
Councilor Rose Park.
Yeah, I think we do, if there's.
Yeah, they're quite handy height for a.
A small children's, yeah. I don't think it's necessarily a good choice if it's something like, anything within range of children.
And they look like blueberries.
Yeah, they do.
You know, you're not through the new varieties, I just wonder whether you.
Chairman, the original suggestion was Beech, and I don't know why it's changed to U, but I'm sure the Bloom Group would welcome any feedback in terms of, you know, if there's any concern about using U.
U is extremely slow growing, so it's very minimum maintenance. Privet would be a better, that's what I'm concerned, but that is relatively fast growing. Wouldn't eat maintenance, certainly faster than Beech.
Lizzy, explain.
I'm not a gardener at all, but I know a couple of the beds on there, we've always sort of like used things that people can pick and use in the sandwiches or on the tea or something like that. Is there not a berry bush that we could use that people can pick from? Like raspberries or something, I don't know. I'd rather something was edible or non-edible and not poisonous that is used there than berries that look edible, if you know what I mean.
Councilor, do you, I mean, I'm not a gardening person, I can kill a plant in a heartbeat, so. Perhaps it's something we could take back to the Bloom Group and ask them to have a look at?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to probably put something there, but I think they need to go back to the drawing board to what.
So, overall, happy with the idea of the suggestion of a hedge, it's just the what. Everyone okay with that, mate?
Yeah.
Chairman, so I've moved a minute through that addendum.
Yeah, can I have a second? Item number six, the finances attached. To confirm the previous statements made by the town clerk to the county town council since the meeting, since the last meeting of the council, and to delegate consent for payments to be made prior to the next meeting. Anybody have anything to say on the finances?
Nothing to say, I would just like to accept those and delegate them.
Okay, you have a second, Councilor Mary, all in favour, say aye. Thank you very much. Item number seven is estimated out of 2022-2023 budget, so we'll go to item 7A.
So one of those like this.
Is this the one that's got changes?
No.
Yes, please.
Right, so the first one is the calculations at the beginning of the year and the set preset. So, our balance go forward was 219,474, we anticipated income at the third day, so we led it 269,600 at last year. Expenditure as presented with a forecast, which would mean we're about 294,000 pounds left. I redid this as at the other day with the, like, taken into account income we've already received this year and what I anticipate we'll get in the next few months, quite conservatively. And I'm projecting we get £71,000 in, preset obviously the same, and expenditure of £320,000. So I think the balance at the end of March should be more like £239,570. Now, the last few years, we've ended the year on 219, 229, 187 and 150. So that's just so you have an idea of what I think the bank balance will be at the end of the year, so you know potentially what you can take out of that and not leave us with nothing. Not on like, not on balances.
That's quite an increase, isn't it?
What, £239?
On your forecast, yeah.
Yeah, we got some Covid grants at the start of the year.
So, it's double, double, double.
Yeah, we've, you know, we've got good donations at Switchon, and a few bits and pieces that we've got throughout the year that can add up to that.
That's good news.
So that's that.
Anyone else have, Councilor Wick?
Well, chairman, I've got a proposal that takes into account 7A and 7B. So, if.
Please, sir.
Yeah. Jo, have you put them round the room?
I have put them round the room here, so I'm not getting distracted.
There's two separate pieces of paper.
Have you got them?
I've got mine, thank you.
Tom, no. Thank you very much.
So, the first piece of paper, which is headed budget, encompasses item 7A and 7B. Between Jo and myself, coming. Between Jo and myself, we can talk you through this.
This looks a bit clueless, C as well, doesn't it?
Well, C is a preset, isn't it?
C is the long range.
Oh, well, yeah, it's a purpose, C is long, in that case.
Yeah, okay.
All right. So, if you look at, if you look at the sheet that was circulated with the agenda, which is table one that. Just picking up the exceptions really, and then referring to the, to the resolution that I'm putting on the table. So, in the column for the budget, the one that it says allotments at the top, yeah? I'll just pick out the ones that I'm suggesting we change. So, this table, which adds up to £406,100, is what Jo and myself in discussion estimated we should, should need next year. But the total down at the bottom, £466,000, is too much. Although, yeah, we could set a budget at that level and we could make an appropriate preset, that would lead to a horrendous increase in the council tax, as far as the town council is concerned. So, I've gone through the proposed budget to see where we can slim it down a bit, but there are some increases included on the budget, you know, if we look at this year and the proposals for next year. So, the top line allotments, the budget as proposed was £3,500. Because the allotment committee are a parsimonious lot chaired by councillor Tom Wick, they're very, well, they don't spend it, basically. And despite the best efforts of people to encourage them to invest in new fences and paths and things like that, they sort of like do things themselves, declare allotments, and as a consequence, it's very unlikely that we need £3,500 in the budget. So, the proposal is to reduce that by £2,000. The next budget, the back in ballot budget, is £10,000. And there's a multiplicity of things that that is intended to be used for. But the reality is, we've not spent the entirety of that budget in recent years. So if we're looking for budget reductions, that's a bit of an obvious one, so that's £5,000. Just passing over the next couple where there aren't any proposed changes. The next one to highlight is the line that says box bar, and that's £30,000. Now, that was something that wasn't included in the budget for the current year, when we discussed it last year, because we'd taken the decision not to have bands on the square. But the intention is to have bands on the square as part of the Queen's Platinum Jubilee celebrations. So, we need to include the relevant expenditure. So, that's £30,000, which is the cost of operating the bar, the estimated cost of operating the bar. The next two items, the bus shelters and bus store, relatively small items expenditure, both of which for different reasons can be just slimmed down a little bit. So, the proposal is to knock £500 off one and £600 off the next. And then, going down to events, the current year, we have £20,000 in the event pot. And that was £20,000 put in on the basis that we might be able to do something, we might not. But it didn't encompass doing bands on the square, didn't encompass doing the beach. So, when Jo and I looked at it, we reckoned it needed £70,000 to go back to the sort of level that we had pre-pandemic. But on the basis that, you know, the whole package isn't really affordable, my suggestion is that we trim that back by £10,000, so that is £60,000. And then, two items where there's a suggested reduction of £1,000, there's hanging baskets and planting, £17,500, and the suggestion there is to knock that down by £1,000. If you look at the previous report that we had, we're unlikely to spend £17,500, so we can afford to knock that down a bit. And then, the next one is to reduce the expenditure on market by £1,000. And that's on the basis that in the current year, as a consequence of the events that we're doing in the markets that we're running, we're introducing some efficiencies into operating the market. I mean, simple things like having additional trolleys, so that you make it quicker to set the market up and quicker to knock it down, so therefore you're not paying people for as long a period of time to do it. So, we can knock a thousand off that and still have the monthly markets that we're currently establishing. And then, down, public toilets, we've got £23,000 expenditure for public conveniences. Now, we are due, and Jo correctly filmed wrong on this one, we are due to get the business rates knocked off?
I counted them six months ago, and he said to me, I don't like talking about.
Okay, right, well, legislation was going through Parliament to exempt public toilets from business rates. I mean, public toilets and business rates, sorry about that. And it was the late Lord Greaves that had been pushing this before he passed away. And, yeah, so, I mean, before he died, he was confident that this would have been enshrined in legislation. So, I'm thinking we're going to get the business rates knocked off, and therefore we can reduce the bill by £3,000. And the next two that I want to highlight, on salaries, a couple of years ago, maybe three years ago, I'm not quite sure, because of the pressure on our clerks' time, who does a sterling job, you know, with one-person office and, you know, does power through things. But because of the increasing activity, as a town council, we resolved to set on a additional person who would be principally office-based and perhaps would concentrate on events. The pandemic came along and that decision wasn't implemented. And it was one of the savings that we took in the last year or the year before. So, the budget reduced back to its previous level. Given the increasing activity, we've resumed events, and that's taken up quite a lot of time and energy. So, both Jo and myself feel that we ought to resurrect that second office-bound person. And then the other aspect of this is that the spend in the current year reflects the use of casual staff in order to put events on. Because of the way that the auditing requirements are, those costs have to be allocated against salaries, as opposed to actually allocated against a cost center. And we're doing some work on, you know, sort of doing something below the top-line spreadsheet, so that we can actually analyse where the expenditure is. But nevertheless, the current year's spending reflects that activity which wasn't there before. And then the third thing is, there was a resolution by the town council three or four months ago, can't remember what it was, which. which, um, was at the request of the Bloom Group, who were asking if, um, uh, the town council could employ somebody who could, as part of their duties, do some of the gardening works. Um, because there was a risk that the Bloom volunteers would sort of just, you know, say, sorry, but, you know, like, you're taking the mickie. Um, if they were constantly being expected to do more and more and more. So, um, combined with the existing work that, um, has been done during the current year in terms of renovating benches, you know, doing, um, maintenance work and the like. And a possibility, no more than that at the moment, where a possibility that we could take on the inspection of playgrounds rather than, uh, paying another organisation to do it. Um, that figure there for salaries includes the costs of, um, a part-time person to undertake that sort of range of duties. Um, so looking at the, uh, resolution that's on the table, um, the fourth part of that requests that the HR panel consider emitting recommendations on the salary levels of the existing employees, uh, for, um, twenty-two, twenty-three. And also, given that there wasn't an increment for the clerk during the, um, current year, uh, to consider a backdated increment for the clerk as well. And the whole of those costs are incorporated within that, uh, proposed budget line for salaries. And then the last bit is, um, at a previous meeting, the town council agreed to put twenty thousand pounds into new allotments at Greerda Fields. And the, um, uh, that, that was on the basis of either the university funding coming through and doing, um, a bigger job or if the university funding doesn't come through, cutting this quota according to the cloth. Um, having a, you know, a scheme in the order of twenty thousand pounds. That's all on the expenditure side. Um, by taking those reductions and accepting that that twenty thousand pounds on the Greerda Field allotment is a one-off expenditure. The, um, recurring expenditure is, uh, four hundred and twenty-three thousand pounds and the twenty thousand pounds of non-recurring. So a total of four hundred and forty-three thousand pounds budget requirement. On the income side, um, there's various increases there. And, uh, in terms of income from bots, if we look back two years, we'd actually estimated, um, an income of, uh, fifty thousand pounds. And so, um, you know, it, it's a bit of a finger-in-the-air job. But, uh, when we actually last did bots, we, we got forty-eight thousand, uh, in income on the bar. So fifty thousand is probably near the mark. The forty thousand pound figure was, um, quite a conservative estimate. Um, civic hall, again, if you look back two years, the estimated in income was thirty thousand pounds. During the current year, we've had, um, some months where there hasn't been any income. And...
So I was just noting the overall was missing off the income on item seven B.
Uh, yeah, um...
Yes, no, on item seven B, there is a, there is a missing item.
Yes, it's all right, you can say, I'll get councillor Parker, Rose Parker to confer. I have written it in.
Yeah.
Um, and I'll get to that in a minute. Um, so, an extra ten thousand on the box bar, an extra ten thousand pounds on civic hall income. And then allotments, uh, currently, income is about five thousand pounds. The proposal is on the allotment rent to have a five-pound increase across the board, which is what we had a couple of years ago, but I think we froze them last year.
Yeah.
Um, so the proposal is to do the five pound up there. But, I mean, it's a marginal increase in the income. And, um, more significantly, if we manage to get the, the Greerda Field site off the ground or in the ground, um, there'll be more allotments and it could be an uplifting income. But I don't think we can budget for that at the moment. So, uh, that would increase, um, the income figure that, that's actually on the sheet. That would increase the income figure, but by say, um, uh, twenty-five thousand. I'm ignoring the six hundred. And, uh, that would make the, um, the gap between the expenditure and the income, um, would come down. But we would still have a, a gap of seventy thousand pounds. And that takes us on to the next part of, um, the agenda item, which I'll pause at that point because the discussion on the precept is separate. Separate discussion later.
Okay.
Yeah?
Yeah, understand that. Um, does everyone else understand that or any questions? Councillor, uh, councillor?
Um, just on the, the box bar income line, um, I note that there's other sources of income for bottom than the bar. Is that inclusive of all the sources of income?
Such as?
Such as, um, rent for, should burn around or, um, rise, I don't know.
The rent you pay.
I don't think you...
Chairman, I think we're looking at the, the gross income for everything. The, uh, the merchandise, the box tops, it, it's more a promotional thing rather than, um, than an income generator. It pays for itself.
The whole income, the whole weekend included merch, anything else was forty-eight and a half.
I don't care doing. Okay, so has anybody got, are there any other comments on that or, um, is there a second for this part, councillor, second? All in favour of councillor Partey, sorry?
I'm Karen. Put in a general plea that I, I realise that David has asked for separation of setting this budget and the consideration of the precept. Um, however, um, acceptance of this budget as it stands presupposes that we're going to accept the precept, um, request. Um, in other words, if you go on to the next bit and say, well, we don't like the precept of two hundred and seventy-five, we want to keep it at two hundred and sixty-four, which is what it was before, um, then, you know, having already accepted this budget, you know, you can't go back and say you've taken all the ten thousand out of reserve
Yeah, okay.
to keep the precept a certain, so that there's no increase in the precept. Um, I'm just worried, as you like, if, if we go ahead and accept the budget proposals now, that when we get to the next bit, which is setting the precept, then we're hoisted on our own pata and we can't go back and change the budget because we just accepted it.
I see, okay.
Um,
So you're suggesting...
Other than the request, that, that I think it would be admirable of this council if it could go and say, we are not going to increase the precept on the population. And if the difference is only ten thousand, which it seems to be, two hundred and sixty-four to two hundred and seventy-five...
Two six, it was two sixty-nine, six hundred.
Right, yeah.
Add that to two seventy-two.
Yeah, I was going to question the, the...
If, if, if the difference is so small, why couldn't we take the extra money from reserve?
So, so looking at, looking at the calculations, Joe's got a different answer.
I've added a balance.
Well, it's only by three thousand pounds, but, um...
Well, I suggest...
I want to, I want to just address the fundamental issue.
Um, two years ago, the precept was two hundred and seventy-nine thousand six hundred. In other words, it was nearly, nearly two hundred and eighty thousand pounds. And last year, we reduced the precept by ten thousand pounds. Now, the proposal, um, in the round envisages using seventy, seventy thousand pounds from reserves. Now, we've up, well, my proposal reduces the budget, which Joe and I thought was a reasonable budget based on the level of activity that we have, from four hundred and sixty-six thousand one hundred, um, by twenty-three thousand pounds, well, twenty-three thousand one hundred. But the gap between that expenditure level and the income level is significant. So, if we are to match income and expenditure by, uh, use of reserves, it's not something we can do every year. So next year, if we want to maintain an expenditure level of, um, four hundred and, uh, forty-three thousand pounds or four hundred and twenty-three thousand excluding the twenty thousand non-recurring, we would have to increase the precept by a lump all in one go. Now, the proposal that is in front of you is that there is a, a, a very modest increase of, well, it works out at slightly less than two percent, um, on the precept. But it doesn't, um, it doesn't make the, the split gap between expenditure and income. Um, but it doesn't increase the burden to any significant amount. It's actually less than half the rate of inflation. But if we, if we, if we, if we say, right, well, we're not putting the precept up, then you need to cut the, the, the expenditure. Because next year, we've taken it out to reserves, we can't take it out to reserves twice. And next year, Joe will be saying, well, you know, your, your estimated balances. I mean, I've had to talk to her at length to get her to accept going down, going down by the amount that I'm proposing. Because as a responsible financial officer, she will point out that the auditors will say, our balances ought to be fifty percent of our budget. So if our budget is four hundred and twenty thousand pounds, say, then our balances ought to be ten thousand. And the proposal I'm putting is going down to one hundred and seventy thousand and using seventy thousand out of the balances. Next year, figuring out the twenty thousand, because that's non-recurring, but in order to maintain the same expenditure level, the town council would need to find fifty thousand pounds. And Joe would say, well, hang on a minute, you can't take it out to reserves because we're already the older level of the audit to say we're good enough. And if you wanted to put fifty thousand pounds on the precept in one fell swoop, then, um, you know, that's a shocking amount and, you know, people wouldn't accept that. So I, I think what I've tried to do is, is, is strike a balance between no significant increase, but, uh, uh, you know, having sufficient resources, um, to allow the town council to carry on with the level of expenditure we want to. But I, I mean, I've put the proposal on the table for the budget and the estimated income. You know, if anybody wants to put any amendments to that, if anybody wants to reduce it any further, then, you know, sort of, we can discuss it.
Councillor, sorry, thank you, sir. Um, no, uh, objective achieved. Um, just by raising the point, I had a far better explanation from David than what we've got in the paperwork that we've had. Um, and I'm quite prepared to accept that. Um, I was only being a bit pedantic in terms of suggesting that we didn't increase the budget. Quite happy to accept the reasons and the rationale why, which hadn't previously been explained. I withdraw my comment. But carry on.
Councillor Church, you have, you have a...
Um, I was going to say, if, um, if last year we reduced the amount and we are now talking about a modest increase, how would the total compare with two years ago?
We would still be below what it was two years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, two years ago, the precept was two hundred and seventy-nine thousand six hundred. So the proposal this evening would be some five, I mean, round figures, five thousand pounds lower than it was. We knocked ten thousand off next last year. Um, and in effect, uh, because, and, and, I mean, never mind the inflation pressure, you know, check out the gasco, whatever.
Yeah.
Um, but we're putting five thousand on.
Okay.
Can we just, don't tell this addition?
Yeah, we've got a couple of numbers for you. I'm just, um, checking out the difference.
So new revised budget is four, four, three. New revised income is a hundred and one.
Well, there's, there's, unless I've done a typo, the, um...
That's wrong, just checking now.
The two, seven...
Sixty.
Seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-two thousand, twenty-three thousand one hundred. So, the reduction should add, should add up to twenty-three thousand one hundred.
Now about twenty-three thousand.
Twenty-three thousand.
Yeah, that's what I...
Twenty-three thousand one hundred.
This reduction.
Yeah, that's get rid of the hundred.
Yeah, which brings it down to four, four, three, exactly.
Four, four, three, yeah.
And then income, I get a hundred and one.
The income is... Hundred and one. Where do you get a hundred and one from? Oh, from this bit.
Well, eighty...
Ninety, yeah, hundred and one.
So that minus that, that is...
Eighty-eight.
A hundred and one for income.
Yeah, yeah.
And where do you get a hundred and one?
Fifty plus thirty plus eight plus three plus five plus five.
You've got the seventy thousand as well.
Yeah, no, I just know that to understand why, yeah.
On your precept.
Uh, sorry, apologies.
So the precept...
Apologies, yeah, I see where it is.
So the total precept comes out of two, seven, two, well, two, seven, five.
The, the typo is on the market where the income on item seven B is five thousand pounds. The eight thousand pounds is a carryover from two years ago. And it should only be five thousand.
Five, that's five.
Okay.
Sorry, what I did, what I did, I went, I went back to the document from two years ago and then sort of inserted the new figures.
That's fine, that, that, that makes two thirty-five. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, because I, I don't think the market, I mean, we've accepted that we're not going to do, um, a regular weekly market um, because we just don't have the stall holders. So the, the call that was accepted by the town council a couple of meetings ago was that we were then to have, uh, a monthly market. And we reckon if we get twenty stalls at twenty-five quid a time, once we... once we've got them established, that's five hundred quid. Say we have ten markets, you know, we might not have them every month. Um, so that works out at at five thousand.
We're clearly, we're clearly talking about budget and precept here at the same, so we'll just, we'll just do it as one, if that's okay. Absolutely.
Thanks, Chair. Um, we currently spend thirteen thousand pounds a year on CCTV. Um, if I recall correctly, we have twenty six, is that, is that the right number? Inquiries for the CCTV project button?
I don't think that.
It wasn't even that. I mean, I think twenty six was the number a couple of years ago. I mean, that works to about five hundred pounds per inquiry. And then I've rarely got to consider, is that value for money? Um.
I I I can only agree with you as far as CCTVs. We certainly have this conversation many a times, and the the council would have looked at it in that kind of dispassion. It's been absolute nightmare.
Yeah.
We can't even get a contract out on that one.
Well, then, I was saying, we agree to a partnership when we were transferred out of Pendle.
And where is that partnership?
With them, so we replace Pendle with a partnership.
Sure.
Um, I mean, I'm I'm dubious to whether they actually prevent crime in the first place. And if there's only twenty six inquiries a year, then they're not solving much crime either. Um, and I think that does include police inquiries as well, unless they're on a different. Yeah, it does, so, I mean, for thirteen thousand pounds, it's bonkers.
Castle Wood.
Chairman, um, that may well be the case. Um, but in budgetary terms, we can't just twitch it off.
No.
Um, so, um, if the council wants to review whether it does it or not, then it needs to resolve it and perhaps, uh, you know, look at a change twelve months hence. Um, now, I I mean, I'm ambivalent about the deterrent effect and all that sort of stuff. Uh, and and so I'm not making any judgment on, you know, its use. All I'm saying is, in practical terms, you can't vote not to have a budget tonight, because, um, you know, you've got all the poles there, you've got all the infrastructure in place, you've got ump team, um, uh, uh, electric payments. Uh, if you're going to, if you're going to decommission the system, you need to remove the poles, so you need a budget for the removal. It it would need a lot of unpicking, um, to actually take a town. I mean, the alternative that the town council has considered is having a local monitoring station. And whether that would be any cheaper is another matter. Um, um, but, you know, if people want to look at it, then, you know, opportunity cost is, if you're looking at that, we're not doing some of those. And I can tell you that Joe's already stretched in trying to do all that she's doing. So only I've got to say, right, well, we want to look at not doing CCTV, but you've got to say, right, and and to have the time to look at that, we're not going to do X, Y, Z.
I I I think regular CCTV would be a step backwards anyway.
One, I hope.
Yeah, even even if it doesn't actually do anything, people feel safer with it there. That's my opinion. Um, sorry, we're we're in a.
Do we have a second, please? I'm trying to see how I can get that back down.
Well, actually, there is, John, I'm sorry, yeah.
Oh, well. As as David said, not being able to rely on using, you know, our, um, our savings essentially from the previous years, every single year, we're going to have this problem. And if we don't, if if we're trying to make only a modest increase to the precept, then I think we're pushing it down the line. And eventually we'll have to say, we have to drastically cut what we're doing, which is not what we're doing. Or we're going to have to say that the precept's going to have to go up. And I think that returning it to at least pre-COVID amounts, if we're putting on the pre-COVID amount of events or more, then possibly we should consider putting it back up to a pre-COVID precept. Um, does does David have, do you have a, that kind of figure for the household kind of thing? I mean, I know it's obviously a issue when it comes to. Yeah. I mean, the overall, it's a match of coppers.
Yeah.
You know, the differences, which we've got, the town council's share of the council tax overall, and Ken's got all the finger, the figures to his, on his fingertips. Um, you know, the the county council, their increase will be more than the whole of the town council precept, uh, cost. But I I think the the balancing thing, and last year, the town council put the view that we wanted to reduce the precept because it people were in hard times. And I think equally, with the, uh, you know, cost of fuel, uh, you know, gas and electric rocketing, you know, the pressure on people's household budget is going to be even worse this year. So, um, I mean, I I hope that we could, we could have a standstill and and, you know, the suggestion of the two percent or just shy of two percent.
Is exactly two percent on the bounty.
Well, yeah, I I I I wasn't quite sure, because there's a very small change in the tax base. Um, I didn't, wasn't trying to pan out. But, um, yeah, I I, even though it's a very small amount, um, you know, that extra five thousand pounds is an extra five thousand pounds. And I accept fully the come next year, we might say, well, we need to put it up by a bit more. Or there's lines in this budget, which we, you know, there's some lines in this budget where we committed to doing it. Um, but there's other lines where if we come to A, I'd say, we could say, right, well, we're not going to do this, or we're not going to do that, we're not going to do the other. You know, the town council will take a view is, you know, do we want to do those things? Or do we want to keep the the costs down? And and that's for the decision of the town council in the future. Or, as John says, we can make a decision tonight, but that's that's the judgment I'm making. And and, you know, we haven't had any pre prior discussion about it. So, you know, if the view of the town council hall is to do something different, you know, I'm I'm I'll live with that.
So just before I come to, um, just to add to John's question, the band D, Barn Oldwick, uh, currently paying ninety two pound twenty three per household. The increase of two percent is one pound seventy seven per household.
The year.
Per the year.
For the year.
For the year.
Yeah.
So the typical property in Barn Oldwick, actually, Band A.
Yes.
So that's.
Now, Band A is sixty one pound forty eight.
Yeah, forty eight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
The decrease would be one pound.
One seventy seven on Band D, that's the calculation it actually gives me. I dare take this out, because I have to put it in for my flag. What's the band, where is it?
Sixty one.
Sixty one, forty eight, so plus two percent, you know, uh.
I think that includes it, do you think, what's this, it was safe to do that?
Twelve pound twenty nine, uh, twelve point two nine.
Twelve pound twenty nine. Yeah. Castle Harder, sorry, you heard something to come in there.
I was just going to say before I got off the speakers, like, personally, I'm, I'm thinking, as town residents go, I would have liked, would have preferred to keep the precept as low as possible here. Because just what's happening with all the expenses, household living expenses. You know, it's it's not a good time right now. And but when you say there's only a pound.
It it's literally ten pounds a month.
Yeah.
If it's over twelve more.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, uh, no.
It's not, it's not a maximum.
Slightly more than ten.
Yeah.
Castle Rose Park.
So so then, going back to the reserves, and we've been, we've been advised that we should keep it to around what, two hundred and ten?
They say between five and six months, and you put annual budget. So it's like when COVID hit, we did a big reject, didn't we? And we changed what we did, and we didn't take somebody on, and while we applied for every grant until the sun. And from it, we ended up better off than than we would have been if COVID hadn't happened. Hence the fact that this year we can take seventy grand out of budgets out of reserves, because that particular year, we were meant to be using a lot of the reserves to the town centre. But by the end of the year, we were back in the same position, because a lot of things hadn't happened or whatever. So that means this year, we're able to, in effect, do that again, because we pulled it back that year. That makes sense, that makes sense?
Yeah, um, I think I'd still be more comfortable keeping more within the realms of the applied version, you know, amounts than that, especially if by doing so, it changes say from one pound seventy seven to say two pounds or something, you know, it's. If it's that much.
There are some bits in there, like C A B, and then they don't apply for the grant. So we do an internal transfer for the room you use, but they haven't applied for the grant for the last two years, so they don't apply for it. Then it goes back into the pot, doesn't it?
This this suggestion actually takes our our balance back to twenty nineteen sort of times, isn't it? Hundred and eighty thousand pounds.
To do that.
Which, manageable?
Yes. I wouldn't do it at all.
Okay. All right, Lindsay.
I'd like to second the proposal that's been put on the table.
Thank you. Uh, all's in favour of seconding the proposal? Sorry.
It's tied up, you do.
All's in favour, yes.
Is this a budget?
This is, I think this is both, is that right, Lindsay?
No, the budget, the precept.
Okay, just the budget.
Yeah.
Unanimous, yeah?
Yeah. Okay.
So so then, Chairman, the the second set of proposals is in terms of, uh, meeting that budgetary requirement. And, um, at this point, if 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 the feeling of the town, or consensus or the majority of the town council want to take less out of reserves, or indeed perhaps more out of reserves, although I wouldn't advocate that, um, you know, this is the opportunity to do so. But the proposal is that of the the budget, who would just agree of four hundred and forty three thousand, that, um, fifty thousand is met from the income from Bandon Square, uh, the bar, uh, thirty thousand pound income from the city call, five thousand pounds from the market, three thousand pounds from parks, five thousand pounds from allotments, five thousand pounds donation to events. Um, and that seventy thousand pounds is utilized from reserves, leaving a requirement of a precept of two hundred and seventy five thousand pounds. Um, and the the council know that the consequence, the estimated balance at thirty first of March twenty twenty three is circa one hundred and seventy thousand pounds.
Bit more.
It it's only.
It's closer to one hundred and eighty. Looking at the numbers of Joe forecasters, two hundred and thirty nine, five, seven, fifty.
Call that two forty.
Call that two forty minus seventy.
That's hundred and seventy.
Seventy, I'm tired.
I'm watching you scribbling, thinking, what is he doing?
Yeah.
Brand models.
And 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 just very briefly to reiterate that, um, you know, if we want to keep expenditure level at four hundred and forty three and the gap is seventy thousand next year, as responsible financial officer, Joe won't be saying, yes, you can cut another seventy thousand pounds out, because then she would be saying, the auditors will say that that is too low a figure.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's the balancing act that that John's referring to. And and the, you know, it's not easy. Um, the town council wants to do things, not, you know, necessarily, um, sit on his footers.
Yeah. Castle Wood.
Uh, three U chairs to Joe. Um, just reiterating John's concerns, how much would that, the seventy thousand pounds, how much would that take us below the recommended level by the auditors?
It's five to six months, say, budget was, this year was, um, three, I think, there? It was three twenty four this year, wasn't it? So that would mean that the end of the year, we should have a hundred and. I don't, I'm wasting, you know, a hundred and sixty two. But this year's budget's gone up, there are a couple of items in there which are one offs, as in like the allotment. So that's, it's quite right that that should come out of reserves if we've got the reserves there. There's nothing else in there that would reduce, so technically speaking, we should have two hundred and twenty.
Yeah.
That'd be like the maximum, but if you took five, six of that, to get a part of that, I think we'll have about a hundred and eighty.
Right, so to put us within the amount that the auditors recommend, you would want.
Hundred and eighty.
To to knock ten grand off that use of reserves, wouldn't you?
Yeah, but there are a couple of items that are outstanding, one with LCC and one with Pendle, and if they come back, back up a bit anyway. So I think I'm certain that those have been on some of the really, and battling a little bit with them. But I do think in in time, they will come in, so we wouldn't have that issue.
They'd take a hundred and eighty five nearly.
Yeah, so it's not a million miles out there.
It'll be on that far off.
I mean, worst case scenario, if if we get to a point where, I don't know, the income hasn't come in as as such, and you still have a budget, twenty grand on events, you might have to turn around and say, well, we can't do it because we don't have budget, or we'd have to go out for grants for it. There's always a way, isn't there? As long as it's not like paying less than electric bills.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Castle Harder.
I'm comfortable with it.
Castle Harder.
Thank you, Ken. I'm quite happy that that proposal for the precept, um, it is manageable. Um, okay, so we dipped marginally below where we might be in terms of reserves, we got wrapped on the knuckles for it now. There are justifications for it. I've already been satisfied, second David's original proposal, which is a precept level of two hundred and seventy five.
Do we have a second or not?
You don't need one.
David proposed this.
No, sorry.
I proposed it.
Yeah, okay. All those in favour of you?
Sorry, can I just ask?
Sorry.
Before I do that, I'm sorry, I just wanted to look, just consider the idea that, again, we may well be setting up for a large leap in the precept in one, two years' time. If we can't manage this budget in the same way, because we can't keep drawing off reserves, could we not just consider reducing the use of the reserves? Just a little increase in the precept a little bit, because then it can at least step up slightly at a smaller kind of scale than a large jump possibly next year, where we're going to have possibly a seventy thousand short to reserve, you know, but we won't ever spend it again.
I don't think we will, because if you if you consider what we're going to be left with is within three percent of what the auditors require.
Yeah.
Then that that gap is still going to be there, still a hell of a way in the bank.
If we're short seventy thousand now, next year, we want to see another seventy thousand.
Yes, yeah, we won't be there, actually.
So we'd need to raise the precept then, because that's if we can't take out reserves.
The issue is, we've got to justify, if we don't take it out of reserves and we sit on that money, we've got to justify why we sat on it, if that makes sense, when it's like we've taken it out of taxpayers' pocket to put in our bank account, when it could have been in their bank account, if that makes sense.
Absolutely. And if if the five months recommended amount is about a hundred and eighty six thousand, and we're already at a hundred and seventy, then I think justification is that we kept that amount, because we've been told we need to keep what they spied on us.
Yeah, yeah.
So possibly just increasing, sorry, decreasing the use of reserves by the the sixteen sixteen thousand and having that added to the precept instead is only an incre, a small incremental addition to a a council tax fare vote. At least it makes a jump much less next year, when we're going to have to find as well as seventy thousand possibly. Unless, again, as David said, we drastically cut our spend on the events.
So brilliant, Chair, how much is that, did you say? Reduce it to what?
Oh, I think we'd reduce the reserve spend by the sixteen thousand or so.
Sixteen?
Sixteen, yes, but to to make it the five months amount that, uh, this is just that we should keep in reserves.
Chairman, I'm aware, I think somebody was indicating here, I want to.
After. Yeah, um, Chair, I was just going to explore that point further. Um, if we had a sixteen thousand pound reduction in use of reserves this year, and it came to next year, and we had that same addition to what is required of us from the auditors, then that could be put against the precept of next year's budget as well.
Yes.
And so the full amount that we would use to reduce it here would be used, just that, you know, it would be. just that, you know, it would be over the two years, is that what it's the one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Chairman?
Council.
Yes, sorry, I mean, I, I, I do not disagree with what Captain John Knows Parker is saying. Um, if circumstances for the general public were different to what they are, um, you know, I would be going down, you know, a more prudent line than, than what I'm suggesting. Um, as I said previously, you know, I, I feel very strongly and I think colleagues around the room feel very strongly that we're a town council and we want to be doing things, and doing things does require funding. Um, so, you know, I'm loathe to sort of, you know, have such a significant gap. However, there, there are perhaps two or three things. First of all, of that fifty, sorry, of that seventy thousand pounds that we're suggesting using reserves, twenty thousand pounds of it is one off expenditure on the new allotment side. So the real gap is, um, uh, less by that twenty thousand pounds. And without the intent to double count it, um, if, if we've got a budget now of four hundred and forty three, if we take that twenty out, we're down to four hundred and twenty three. Um, if we have, um, uh, uh, a, a precept of two seventy five and, um, additional income of eighty eight thousand, that's eighty eight plus two seventy five, which someone's going to tell me how that is in a minute, um, two seventy five.
About eighty eight?
Yeah, that's
Three sixty three.
Three sixty three, which gives us a, a potential gap, uh, next year of sixty thousand. So it's not seventy thousand gap next year, it's only sixty thousand. Now, the second bit of this is, and Jo is fully aware that I do not agree with the auditors and their requirement for having fifty percent of the budget in reserves. Um, uh, I, I think that with the, the sort of things that we do as a town council, that we could go, um, less than the proposal that we have tonight. Um, and so, and next year I would be averse to taking a small amount out of reserves to help balance the budget. Um, Jo might disagree with that and say, well, the auditors say, well, you have got to take that five percent off. But, you, you know, it is, it is an option for future years. And then the, the third thing really is, um, we don't know what's going to happen in the wider world. You know, there might be miraculous things happening, the government may all of a sudden give some revenue support grant to Paris. Yes, no, pigs might fly, um, so, you know, I think it's, it's a case of sufficient under the days, the legal there. And, and, um, people are under a lot of pressure, we're going to be even more pressured financially. And I just think we shouldn't have unnecessarily to the burden. And if, if, if next year, uh, you know, the people at Barnsley say, well, you know, we want you to carry on doing this, that, or the other, um, then, you know, the consequences are that, um, you know, the, the budget would have to, um, be adjusted accordingly. Uh, there are items in here that we could stop doing in order to, you know, balance the books. Um, I'm not advocating that we do, but, um, you know, there are options rather than sort of maintaining the budget at the same level. And, you know, perhaps the town council, um, deciding to reduce the council tackle, the precept, um, last year, you know, perhaps that was a mistake, but, you know, as a town council, we all felt that was the right thing to do. Um, in hindsight, you know, it, it knocked us back ten thousand, this year we're putting five, we're still five below where we were. So, you know, depending on the technical. I, I've been thinking about this for weeks now, so I'm, I'm sorry if I'm talking about it, but, you know, it, it's been, uh, not the stuff of nightmares, but, you know, it has, I'm talking, I'm talking to it and, um, yeah, that's where I'm at anyway.
So, uh, we had the permission to propose the council whip, and we seconded from council gasco, and council hardly, sorry.
Do you?
Yeah.
Yeah, there.
Sort of John wants to take his own.
Do you, do you want to move your amendment or?
I, I would, I would prefer to consider if we can
Okay.
Uh, in, increasing the precept to two hundred and ninety one, reducing the, using reserves to fifty four and maintaining the hundred and eighty four thousand in reserve.
Two ninety one and reducing the, yeah, okay.
I can accept it.
So, are they, so they're setting the precept?
Ish, I think so.
Oh, precept, that's what you're proposing, isn't it?
If that, if that's the figure, then yes, I, I think that it's probably better to be known as the people who added three or four pounds a year to a tax program to ones who, who cancelled events because we went out here.
Okay, do we have a second for council church? All in favour of the amended, and council knows Parker? Just a two. All in favour of the original, uh, proposal and council whip? So everyone above, two. She's carried.
Chair, can I thank everybody for the, um, uh, the discussion and you, uh, to John for articulating, uh, an alternative point of views, I think he's entirely valid.
Mm-hmm.
Um, uh.
Next year.
Yeah.
Just, just, just to my own thoughts on, you know, that's all done now, but, um, I think that the, to put it up this year would be a bit hard. To put it up by such an amount this year would be a bit hard, considering what people are still going through. And next year the budget can be absolutely different, and we'll work around it like we always do. So I, I, I do think we'll, we might have an increase next year, but I don't think it will be ten, fifteen percent, it'll be, that'll be small.
Well, we can only hope that everybody has the situation is better. If it's not, then soon we'll come down to it, you know.
It's got to give.
Okay. Right.
Council hardly, sorry, this is where you move on, um, considering the budget setting it and doing all in number country and everything isn't an easy job at all. And not least, coming to a personal balanced judgment, which one feels might be acceptable, not only to council but to the public at large. Therefore, I'd like to propose that council extends its thanks to council whip and to our clerk for the sterling work that they've done on getting assists rather quickly.
It's a special moment, David.
So the proposal is that we did, say thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, item number eight, hanging baskets, watering and summer planting.
Sorry, I've checked the top number seven yet, I've got two number seven.
Uh, yes, no.
So we don't have many ages. It's what's happened when I start doing something and somebody walks in and it's.
So item number eight, which is number seven, again, number ten.
What would you do, yeah?
Hanging, hanging baskets, watering and summer planting, to consider renewal of existing contract. For the hanging basket provision, planting and methods of soft landscaping and watering. Anybody want to say anything? Council whip.
Thanks, Chair.
Oh, thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, I mean, currently we've got, um, uh, two contracts. Um, one with, uh, Gledskin Gardens for the provision of the hanging baskets, um, some of the planting, um, um, provision of, uh, uh, plants for planting out by a blood group or possibly by a town council gardener, depending on what progress we make on that, on what that's for. Um, and the town council has previously taken the view that, um, considering the quality, um, reliability of the, um, provision, that we've extended the contract which was won on tender, um, some time ago, subject to not being any, um, fantastic increases. So I, I would propose that we do, um, uh, go ahead on that basis. And I think we'd have to suspend, uh, financial regulations, um, in order to extend the contract rather than, um, to, to put it out for quotations. And the difficulty with quotations when it's something like this is you get prices for chocolate and cheese. Um, and we've had, going back a long time, we've had occasions when, uh, you know, somebody's coming with a, looks like a good price, he ends up with rubbish product. So that's a definitely non-sole, I think. Um, so that's that one, if you want to dispose of that and then.
Cut out, please, council gasco.
Yeah, I think the hanging baskets have been absolutely lovely for the last few years. I think the, uh, contract that we have with the waterer, the van, or the people that water them is, uh, good. Um, you know, it does them either early morning or later at night, so as not to get the plants dripping on people locally. Um, I don't think we've had any complaints or anything, so we're, we're spoiling a good, good job, so I would second that.
Council board, will you?
No.
So we've got second all in favour to go to that part of the board. So that's part one.
Um, uh, well, I, I was leaving the watering bit, um, second bit. Um, it, it, it may be, um, that we need to, 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 to look at that provision. Um, but I, I fully agree with what Lindsay said, uh, the current contractor does an excellent job. There will need to be, uh, a bit of a revision because we'll have, um, slightly more, uh, hanging baskets and planters as a consequence of the work that's been done on firmly, I mean, um, so it will buy a small increment. Um, but as long as the current contractor's capable of continuing, um, uh, reason. Um, in, in terms of the, the last bit of this item, it's a considerable risk scheme for summer planting. Um, it, it's, um, really to list out the, you know, where, where it's happening and if there's any changes that people want to make. Um, I'm not sure, I'm just going to come forward with councillor Tom Wick. There aren't any proposals for a, the vertical garden, is there? No, no, okay, so the, the proposal would be, um, more or less what we had this last year. Um, so provision of, uh, an annual bed for foresters and, uh, the regular building bed, um, beds, whatever, yeah.
Do we second this back proposal?
Yeah.
Council gasco, all in favour, all right? Thank you very much. Item number nine, what would we find out?
Nine, ten, one.
This is eight, eight point five. P S P O review to consider and agree the amendments required to P S P O.
Oh no, I'm a, I'm applying, I feel.
P S P O.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll do this while you read that out.
Um, to consider the agree, amend amendments required to the P S P O orders of Pendle Barn now in place.
Just for the laugh.
Uh.
Council whip.
Yeah, um, so there's, there's apparently a renewal in place which is bound to be discussed at the next, uh, policy resources, we may see a pendle council, um, to renew the P S P Os. Now, they include everything that used to be in the ladder part, um, sort of glittering, dogs on lead, campfires, et cetera. Um, now, the, once P and R agree to renew it, no changes can be made until the next cycle, in another three years' time. So if we have something that we really don't like about the P S P Os now, um, and we did have a couple of ideas at the last meeting for that, um, then we need to get that to P and R before that meeting, otherwise we're stuck for the next three years and for the problem.
I was going to say, you did not respect the last meeting, I was, I missed it, oh. Okay. Let's do it.
Council whip. Uh, Chairman, the, the two things, the, the meeting of policy resources is on the twentieth, which is next week, is it? Yeah, a week tomorrow, um, so it is key that we get comments in. The things that we have agreed already as a town council is that, um, we should uh, remove the requirement for dogs on lead, uh, collective park below the wall.
Yeah.
So at the moment, um, with the exception of the children's play area, the car park, I think, uh, dogs can be off-lead above the wall, whether you appointed. But currently dogs are required to be on the lead below the wall. And the town council previously resolved to ask that the dogs on lead requirement should be removed, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and the other thing that we previously gave to the town council was that the area of folly gardens on the, if I said the gospel mission hall side of the back.
Yeah.
The extension of the playground should be, um, dogs allowed off-lead as well. So I think we've already decided that, so we're just reaffirming previous decisions. The issues of, um, and, uh, council Tom Wick and I have, um, diametric proportions of views on this, so, um, it's up to you guys, because we'll cancel each other out. But, um, following the last time that we discussed it at the town council, uh, there was a, uh, an incident that highlighted the, in my eyes anyway, the practicality of the current ban on dogs on both the skate park area and the junior cycle circuit. And Jen and you and I and, and Jo met with the people affected by that. And what happened was the, um, a lady was walking a dog, uh, on a lead and she crossed the skate park. She was then accosted and harassed by one of these private district enforcement operators who demanded her details, um, because she didn't give in to the P S P O. Because, you know, according to the P S P O, dogs should not be on either skate park or the junior cycle circuit. Um, the, it was an awful incident, um, I understand that an employee at Pendle Council, um, I think it's the same incident, you know, came to her aid and remonstrated with the district enforcement, um, official. And, you know, she, she, she left without giving a detail. But it certainly left a sour taste in my mouth and, um, my view is that And my view is that we could just require dogs to be on lead within the skate park and the junior cycle circuit. Now, there's other parts, the muckeuse games area and the children's play area, which are fenced off and the discreet areas, you can say, you're not allowed to have dogs in there. But the two, the two open areas, which currently have a no-dog law rule, I think that should be relaxed. But I know there's a different point of view, because Tom and I have talked about it quite a lot.
Remember, the problem is going to be distinguishing where one starts and finishes is practically impossible. So unless we paint a square around it or put a fence around it, then having a banned dog is impossible. That's my view. But I'm sure some girls would like to say something about that. Councillor Wood.
I mean, I just think having, you know, dogs in a skate park area where you've got fast-moving kids on bikes, especially with, you know, the lengths of danger you can have, is a recipe for someone getting in a bother. I mean, for the person riding the bike who has to brake suddenly and fall off it because a dog walks in front of them, or for someone who gets the dog hit by a cyclist or, you know, a skateboarder or whatever. And I think it was perfectly reasonable to have no dogs in the skate park rule. I think it's a question of, should they make it clearer? Yeah, probably. You could have a sign at the bottom of the steps. Or even, you know, you have just a barrier in front of the bottom of the steps to make it clear that you don't just carry on straight down, you can go round it, whatever. But in the skate park, I think, you know, no dogs is a reasonable expectation. Especially during active hours that it's being used. I mean, sure, at ten o'clock at night, who cares, but...
Councillor Wood, come back to your last...
If dogs are in the area on the lead, they are a hundred percent under their own responsibility. So if anything happens to the dog, then they're always more than likely to be there because they're family members that won't do anything to the animals or will keep an eye out for the animals.
You could also point out that cyclists cycle around the path, around the whole path.
Yeah, they do. A dog on a lead could get hit anywhere in the park.
Everywhere.
In an area where kids are going to be playing, the lot of the kids are concerned to see the dogs being in that area and mixing with them, I think. And as Tom said, they've got some pet on leads, and yes, there may well be families who've gone with them, but there could be others who want to play with dogs, you know, that close or with the ability to interact with them in the same way. I think we've been able to keep them separate and say, this area is for kids to play in alone. I think that's a fair enough thing to give to people with dogs, so we want to interact with the dogs.
Okay, councillor Gaskell.
Yeah, I understand that, and I understand where Tom's coming from. And I think that, yes, it possibly should be that dogs aren't allowed in there. But I think until there's a fence round it or until we can get some kind of good information post that says that dogs are not allowed on here, I don't think we can afford it. Round that bit or round the cycle path.
We've put some excellent signage up, and two of them have been removed. One of them would have required a six-foot ladder and an angle grinder.
But it's got to be where, I mean, from anybo, from your point of view, you can get onto those two parts from anywhere in the park. Whereas the playground, you've got to go through the gate, and it's on the gate that no dogs are allowed. And in the mugger area, it's on the bits as you're going in, no dogs allowed. So you can't do that on the skate park or the cycle bit. And until we can, I don't think we can actually do it. Which would be good, but I don't think we can afford it now.
Councillor Church.
It seems likely that firstly, if these are specifically dogs on lead, that they're only going to be transiting the skate park and not actually running around pooing the dogs, whatever. And if they are just walking across the facility, then it should be accepted that they will be fairly responsible. If there are various wheeled things whizzing around, then they should be expected to watch themselves. We should trust in a little bit of common sense on that one. I don't think we're talking about letting them in the facility to use it as part of the dog facility, as it were. We're only looking at people who just want to get from A to B across it. So I would hope that we should be able to trust on their common sense and responsibility there.
I might also say that, you know, we're talking about dogs on leads. That the cycle path, it isn't too much for a dog to walk for there, even if he's under control of them. And if that dog just happens to run over there, they can get a fine for it, which is entirely unfair. Shouldn't happen, in my opinion. So.
Chair. Well, I mean, you know, I recognise that, you know, there's views that, you know, the sound. I think the problem is compounded by the officious nature of the private enforcement company who are just looking for easy targets. Because the income of that company depends on them issuing fines. And I think that, you know, given the opportunity of fining people who aren't being responsible, they've got a dog on a lead, but they're just in the wrong sort of redlined area. You know, those operatives are going to exploit that all the time. And I think it was the incident with the lady who was reduced to tears by that officious private sector company, you know, the way that they approached it and targeted it, that, you know, sort of highlighted to me just, you know, how, you know, if you haven't got an absolute hardline fenced-off area, it's just impractical. So that's why I'm suggesting, you know, sort of, we should say to Pendle Council, it's Pendle Council's decision, not ours. We should say to Pendle Council, you know, please just amend that, the dogs on lead area.
Councillor Wood.
Yeah, it is a really difficult one, but like councillor David Wood says, there's both sides to the story here. I would be tempted to go along with what councillor David Wood has said. I wonder whether we're going to allow people to allow them to have dogs on leads and that area. Tom, maybe you sign up, please be respectful of, you know, children and playing or whatever, on those kind of lines, just to be, you know, they may be able to then avoid and not go through that in their own function.
Councillor Gaskell.
Unless we've got another proposal on the table, I second David's proposal that we ask for no dogs at all in there to be down to dogs on leads, yeah. For now, anyway.
Councillor Ross.
I think I'd like to request instead then to, instead of having signs, maybe do some floor markings. And then if you want a path around it, then, well, I can draw a path around it. I don't think that, you know, that saying that gives me too respectful and not interactive is going to be necessary, you know, to stop people from letting dogs interact with children and they don't want to interact with them. Having a path, having a clear designated area, not a fence, because I think that's going to be too much. But there's some lines to follow, like a walkway they can go around it, which can be designated as being for dogs to be walked on. And if the lawn actually catches equal not on those particular paths, then, you know, the people are going to be fined as they should be if they're not being, if they've been there.
Okay, so you're suggesting amendments?
Yeah, I meant to suggest to them that we allow dogs to go and designate paths through those areas or around those areas, but like using floor markings.
Okay, do you have a second for that, to Councillor Wood?
Well, second, that, yeah. I mean, the skate park area does have an edge around it with an easy way to follow a path around the edges of it. I'm not sure where the red line stops, though. I mean, it might just be that we need to amend that and just bound it to the exact dimensions of the skate park and allow a path directly adjacent to the mugger and make that obvious, which it might not be covered. Yeah, I agree with what Tom's saying.
Okay, all those in favour of the amended? All those in favour of the original? One, two, three.
Carried.
Is it you extend, extensions?
I don't have extensions, what do you call it? Abstentions.
I want to get some aspect.
Was that better? Good.
Another aspect to this. Are you going to do it, am I? Well, you recall that, those of us who are here, will recall that twenty years ago, when Pendle Council were proposing putting all these orders in, and some of us were a bit, you know, the town council said, right, well, we would fence off an area so that we have a discreet fenced-off area where it is clear people could allow dogs to go off-leash. It's not supposed to be a secure area, it's just supposed to be a fenced-off area where people know they can go down Victory Park and allow the dogs off-leash. Now, unfortunately, the town council have got a lot of backlash on that. People said, oh, the area isn't big enough, or it isn't secure, and it was intended to be secure, but nevertheless. On the signs, it isn't as big as what we may have wished. However, given the, you know, like ninety percent of Victory Park, it's not a park, it's a set playfield, isn't it? You know, there's a cricket wicket, there's two football pitches, there's a rugby pitch, all of which are pitches, not, there's junior pitches, oh. So those areas, to my mind, rhyme the dogs should be on leads. However, there is one area which was created as part of the rugby pitch area, which was intended to be a training area, but it isn't used. It isn't used by rugby, and we've checked with the rugby club, West Craven Warriors. They don't use it and don't intend using it. And this is the level area at the lower level, going to the...
Down the hill.
Yeah, yeah, down that bit. So they don't want it, or they don't need it. And there is the possibility that we could ask for that to be designated as a dogs-off-leash area, which would create a bigger space. The only provisor in my era, well, there's too many, but a few years ago, the junior football clubs were desperate for new junior pitches because they brought in a requirement for, you know, a different side pitch for different age groups. So at the end, instead of being able to use one pitch, you'd have to have three, so there was a shortage of pitches. Now, it may be that that area would be appropriate for a junior football pitch, in which case, there's a balance between, do you make it a junior football pitch or do you allow it to use for exercising dogs off-leash, which would clearly be popular with the dogwood fraternity.
With the council, the junior football team, the independent junior footballer, they use the junior football team club, they use the space next to the Rocket Ship playground area. They also use behind West Craven School as football pitches, so they are fully accommodated now.
Yeah, and there are two month tenths on the, what I call the football pitch level, you know, the cricket level, which I haven't seen being used apart from to train.
They have used everyone there, so they are quite...
Yeah. So if there is intended demand from the junior soccer players, I would suggest that we consider asking for that, what was truly being a rugby pitch training area, to be allowed to be used by dogs off-leash. Whether that would require fencing, we haven't got anything in the budget to do any fencing, so it, you know, it would have to be a segregation without offence, at least in the short term.
Just to update everybody, both Blackford Park and Victory Park gates have been improved today to make it so dogs shouldn't be able to get under them.
And then we'll tear it out.
No, no, my thoughts were last time, actually.
Okay, so the section below the local pitch. Does anybody else have any comments on that or any queries? Councillor Hurd.
I'll second that.
Thank you, councillor Ross.
Oh, I was just going to say.
All those in favour of that pass, Henry? Abstained, okay, so we've got one, two, three, four, five, six of us. There we go. So item number ten, to discuss and come up with a planning application on the twenty months. Still, I'd say two plus ten to Harrison Street, that's the centre, which is what Joe was walking down there.
I'm trying to read this out, Tom, but David. No, this is quite relevant before you start.
Yeah, Chair, I don't know if I've said this to the whole people, but the land at Harrison Street, in terms of Harrison Street, is adjacent to the play area, which we currently own. There was a discussion at Pendle Council two and a half years ago.
June twenty nineteen.
June twenty nineteen, where it was agreed that the whole of that recreation area and the community asset transferred to Bonn Oxford Town Council. We previously indicated that we wanted it, and there was, I can't remember how it came about, but there was a resolution which Joe has got, which clearly indicates a decision by Pendle Council to have transferred on to the town council. Now, you see that this planning application has a strip of car parking along the Harrison Street publicage. And that would be part of the land which ought to be transferred to the town council rather than be in the ownership of Pendle Council. So before you start discussing it, you need to be aware of that situation. So you've got councillor Tom Wood.
Councillor Tom.
Councillor, I was just going to ask, shall we, item eleven or ten, whichever of the items.
Number eleven.
This is eleven?
Yeah.
No, this is ten.
What is eleven?
The one after it is highly relevant for this, I'm just wondering which one is there to take there.
Oh, yes, so item eleven then is the land at Harrison Street. To discuss and come on the request of Pendle Board Council to make the land at Harrison Street surplus to require in order for the parking to be created for the planning application, item ten. So I think this is, yeah.
Number ten, ten strap eleven, she was put on before we got this.
Yeah, I don't think we can make comments until we've decided our position about the land, because, I mean, the opposition on the land is quite integral to the planning.
No, because this was written, the agenda was... No, because this was written, it generally was written before we realised.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just asking if the chairman would take that item first.
Yeah, absolutely, we'll take this, but we'll take item number, uh, ten, eleven.
Fourteen.
As opposed to nine, ten, and then we'll come back to nine, ten, if that's okay. Councilor Whip.
Thank you very much, Chair. Um, I made my, uh, my opinions on this very clearly, uh, the West Craven area committee. Um, I'll go into the planning reasons why I'm against it on the planning issue. Um, but, I mean, in regards to the land, this is an immediate space. And to give that up for, for parking, I think is just, you know, not, not on at all. Especially in the very dense urban space that the Harrison Street area is. Um, as, as councillor Whip said, that is due to be transferred to us. Um, in, I think in the council's opinion, a promise that it will be transferred means it's already out and I expect, um, as long as Pendle Council keeps its word. Um, and, yeah, just for the pure reason that it's an immediate space, um, and it's, and, you know, originally it was gifted to the area as an immediate space, not to be used for development, not to be used for, for parking for a dentist. So I think, no, we should not make it surplus. Uh, I don't know, it's our decision, um, at the current moment, um, but we should advise Pendle that, no, we don't make it surplus. Um, that's my thoughts, I'll, I'll move to that.
Okay, councilor Ross?
I'm quite happy to say that.
All in favour of, of, sure? That's, that one sorted? We'll go back to the, um, planning provision, the ten, nine, ten. Councilor Tom.
Thanks, Chair. Um, while I'm broadly in favour of the development plans in terms of the size of the, my dentist currently, and I'm sure that the additional, um, practice space will welcome my residents. Um, and it comes back to the, the land on Harrison Street. I think the planning requirement that has made them put in plans for additional parking spaces is a bunch of bullies. Um, it is in a very dense urban space. And the idea that you need three parking spaces per practice, per practitioner room in the building is bonkers. I mean, that's, that's why they've got these parking spaces on the plans, to make this planning requirement. Um, everyone who, you know, goes to this practice should be living in the immediate area. And of course, it's gonna be less than a ten-minute walk away.
How, how many, how many parking spaces in the bar of the doctor's truck? Just after.
No.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, um. Yeah, um.
Settle it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, um, I think as a comment from the town council, we should be making, um, a strong point that while this is welcome, really, there should be a medical centre developed in Barnsley. Um, with adequate dental provision, adequate healthcare provision. Um, incorporating the, you know, the, um, the things that happen in this building, in the doctor's surgery, um, and elsewhere. And that, that would be a much better alternative to chubbing parking next to a playground. Um, whether they'll, we'll see that, whether they can do anything about it, I don't know. Um. There we go. Yeah, um, for what they are used.
Sort of essentially happy with the, the design of the building that they've got, happy with the initial parking that they've got on there on land. Obviously excluding that, that little bit, just with the extra comment of it, um, we shouldn't really have a full development medical centre.
Can I echo that we welcome the provision of the extra dentistry room? Um, which presumably leads to an increase in the number of dentists. The other angle to this is that as part of developing the Harrison Street building, they would take out of use the dentist on the park avenue. Um, but given that that itself causes, uh, concerns, that's to be welcomed. Um, so the increase in the number of treatment rooms isn't as great because it's offset by losing one of them. But, um, there is an increase and, and that's great. Uh, I think, you know, quite a bit ahead about the, the parking. Um, my understanding, I mean, gone through all the, the planning documentation, is that they are put in this parking position at the suggestion of Pendle Council, following what they call pre-application advice. Um, now, uh, the, the, there's the existing rail and road car park, which might be used for, for parking. Councillor Tom Whitt has been pushing for a, a new parking area, which, uh, would be off Clifford Street, uh, which would be for the use of people dropping eclectic children, going to, uh, church school and for residents off Clifford Street. And part of that proposal includes a link through to the Lower, Lower Park Street. So, uh, one of the suggestions that Tom put forward at the area committee was having a, uh, you know, contribution from the dentist towards a new parking area, which would relieve the pressure overall. Um, in planning terms, it is a, a pretty bad place for, you know, a destination like a dentist because Harrison Street is a cul-de-sac. Um, it's narrow, there's parking on both sides, so you have trouble working all the time. Nightmare if you have extra traffic. And it would be far better, as Tom says, if we could have a, a, a new health clinic with all the services properly provided in a sensible location, sensible accessible location elsewhere. And, um, uh, I, I, I think, you know, we, we should certainly make those comments in addition to the ones that, that, that Tom brought out as well. Um, just the last thing, just a bit of an mention really, is that the building that's there was built as a decontamination centre during the Second World War.
Oh, it's closed.
Um, and, uh, uh, it was, you know, like, it was all set up if the, in case of chemical attack, uh, you could take a vehicle in and clean it all off, clean the people off. Um, so, um, I mean, there might be some bright spark who wants to get listed as a World War Two decontamination centre. I am not suggesting or encouraging that, but it is a bit of a unique building and we're open to lose sight of the fact. That's its history.
It's a nice one. Okay, so that's the suggested amendment to councillor Tom Whitt's.
I, I would ask if it would, it would take it on board.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, it would, I would.
And you'll second that as well, the, the second the other two? Okay, all those in favour of, of councillor Whitt's proposal? Fantastic. So before we move on.
The cut is falling out.
I'm just gonna, the cut's hanging up on this one, and it's still hanging up on this one.
Before we move on, councillor Tom, could we try to add any questions to the other four?
Yeah, ignore them.
Uh, no, there's no questions.
No questions?
I have a comment. Are you doing the other side of the pack?
The last thing is, uh, the correspondence.
Uh, yeah, just to let you know, Pendle left us a fact with us. Before we finish, before closing, we paid the ground for this recent initiative, where the owner class actually did it. So if it gets broken across Pendle this time, we've already paid it back.
And those good people meeting, thank you very much, you attend, have a wonderful evening, and I will see you later.
Thank you.